Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. In the interest of time, we're going to go ahead and get started here. Were you good, Jesse? Great. I'm Brianna Gueco, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. And we are partnering on this Power Lunch with Mammoth Voices under Eastern Sierra Now. So Jesse Steele over here is going to be recording it today. And it will be available on the Eastern Sierra Now YouTube channel later today. So we're going to get started with bringing up our one of what we're going to go through the two candidates that are running for the two open town council positions. That's going to be Brent Truax and Bill Sauer. So not much of a race for them this year. Then we'll go through our four ballot measures. We're going to hit Measure J, Mammoth Unified School District. Measure K, Mono County. Measure L, Town of Mammoth Lakes. Measure M, Mammoth Lakes Fire Protection District. So the point of this lunch is to really educate our community on the issues. These are what is everything that is said here today is not necessarily the position of the Chamber of Commerce. We just want to provide a platform for some education around important issues that affect our community. So we're going to reserve Q and A towards the end so we don't hijack anyone's time. So with that, we will get started with Mr. Bill Sauer, who is our current mayor for the Town of Mammoth Lakes.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, Bill.
I hate to say this loud enough on my own usually, but if they're recording. So since there isn't really a race going on, I did not prepare any speeches or any position papers or any of those. What I was going to simply do was ask for questions as to where the town is and where I stand on any issues you guys might want me to. I know she says a Q and A later, but I'm starting out with a Q and A. As far as where I stand on all the positions, they are all well deserving. They're deserving of funding. And I will let you make your own decisions from there because there's a lot of information out there to pursue on each one. Fire protection is huge for me personally. The tent forests all there out of town, the things that have to be done and work that White Park is doing, the work that a lot of people are doing to thin the forest and make it healthier. It's really critical. Housing, of course, is critical. So they're all well deserving and I'll let you all make up your own minds as to where you stand on that. With that, are there any specific questions, anything going on in Mammoth right now? There's one back.
Where's the funding coming from, should we tell him?
That's kind of complicated. So the funding comes from the rent we're currently paying from the several other notes on other things that we have built that were getting paid off or being rolled into one. So at the end of the day, it is not going to put a hit on our general fund. It is covered out of what is there. So it's not a huge ask to be able to build it. My position on that originally was we should stay in the least building because it's the least expensive. The people that own that particular building have shown that we cannot stay there. So something had to be done and this is the viable solution. Anything else?
Didn't we just bond that too, Bill?
Did we what?
Capitalize.
Yeah, we just bond, we just took out bond for that that paid off some of the other notes that makes the whole thing work. We're blocked, yeah. The foundations will be in this year and hopefully we'll get into it earlier rather than later, unlike some of the other projects I've been involved with areas. Beyond that, I can stand here and give you a Mammoth history lesson. It's what I'm good for.
It's going to snow this winter.
Yes, that's it.
Bill, what would you say is the biggest issue facing our community and what is council thinking about it?
There are two huge issues facing the plan. One is, and it's, you know, I've been here forever. I grew up on this vacant piece of property across the street here. Mammoth is different from the other communities nearby in that the people who moved here in the 50s and 60s wanted to create a resort. And that is the path they went down. And what I'm seeing in Mammoth now is a huge pushback on that tourism model. And that's concerning. Where are we going to go? Who are we going to be? The idea that we're spending too much on tourism and not enough on the locals. You know, when we put $30 million into housing and we put $15 million into a rec center and we're about to start work on MAC and all of this primarily for the locals. So to say I'm overspending, I am taking maybe too much money and spending it on locals. I don't know, but I don't know where that goes. But for me, that is, that is huge. The other is the pushback is council has been hitting on how we operate the budget. The way we currently run our budget is super conservative on the TOT dollars coming in. In the last fiscal year, I think we took in just under $28 million. And we put in 18.5 in our budget. That keeps the town lean and mean and it gives us one-time funding sources. That's where the money for housing and these other projects is coming from. I fear that going back to a more traditional form would somehow with daylight, but we've daylighted our budget over and over again, would go back to the ways of, oh, we would end up with a bloated bureaucracy instead of building things on the ground. So those are the two things for me that are, that are huge. How do we convince the locals that their paychecks really do come from the tourist economy? Because a lot of people don't, while they pay at lip service, they don't understand it. Are you shooting me? And now I'm wrapping this up. Thank you all for letting me carry on.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we're bringing up Brent Truax, current Chair, the Mammoth Lakes Department of Commerce Board.
How do you do? Brent, I didn't keep it short so you don't have to come and call me off. I just want a couple of different things that I look forward to talking because being on town council, you're one of five. So that's 20%. So you've got to make sure you get a majority of council members who are there to support you and to agree on the common goals. The town already has a number of goals that they've outlined. And I'm just going to hit a couple of real quick ones here in terms of where I think we need to put some extra focus. One of those is we need to improve how we engage and connect with the community. I consistently see where we have meetings, town council, other events where a limited number of people, or I call it the same 20, seems to show up all the time. And we're not able to engage the rest of the community. I'm looking forward to how we spread out and engage more of the community as a general and be fully cognizant of what the views and the voice of the community are. Two, I'd like to continue on supporting the Town's Housing Now initiative and delivering a range of housing options. I think what I'm hearing overall though is that the AMI is too low and we need to support like SB 440 bill, which Small Business Council just supported, to allow for the regional financing, housing authorities to set the AMI limit. I've talked to a number of businesses in town where all their people that work for them do not qualify for some of the housing that we've built already. We need to find a place and a home for those people to live. The other part too, that I don't feel like me, but I have great internet at our house. Yeah, that's a, but it's a, the county just received a $10 million grant to improve infrastructure in the county. I'm hoping that we can get some of that money here within the town and finalize some of this final mile. We've talked about the final mile for eons. It's time that we actually have good working internet in this town that's consistent and reliable. And with that, I'm just going to mirror what Bill said. We need to have long-term safety, environmental health. You know, we look at, there's about 6,200 fires in California this year alone. None of what we talk about in town matters if the town's not here. This place burns down, there's nothing left. Frankly, this starts to burn down, everything's gone and nothing's going to be here at all. We need to consider what that resiliency looks like and to do all measures that we can to improve our health and the awareness and safety of this town. And that's all I have for now. I appreciate everybody and thanks for announcing.
All right. Next, we are moving on to our ballot measures. First up, Alexis Melmeier, Fire Chief of the Mammoth Lakes Fire Protection District, is going to speak about Measure M.
Good afternoon. Thanks for your time. Just kind of a disclaimer right off the front. As administrator, I cannot make an argument for this. I can clearly educate on this. So raise your hand if you think of a foul bit or anything. But ultimately, I'm a big believer that people need to understand the government they have and they don't have. So if I have a chance to educate everybody, I can actually work sounds really well for the district. And there's some things that can be really confusing about the fire service. People really have to understand what they have and what they don't have. For those of you that have been around for a while, that would think Fire Protection District has been providing services since 1947. It's been here for a long time. And it's technically, we call ourselves Mammoth Lakes Fire Department. If you drive by, that's what it says on our front lawn. Technically, it's a special district, it's a fire protection district. What that means is we are a separate, completely separate organization of government. There's certain ways we have to work for revenues such as ballot measures. Such as TOT and that's ultimately why the board is sent to move forward with this measure. Couple of things, just kind of explaining the district a little bit more. Ultimately, the job of a fire chief or a fire district is at any given point in time, I have to put roughly 15 to 17 people on some type of incident. And that varies quite a bit what that incident is. Could be a wildfire, we run our ambulance out of lot, could be a structural fire, it could be a car accident. For those of you that are business owners, you can imagine if you have to keep a staff of 15 that's available at 2:00 in the morning on a Wednesday or Sunday, it's incredibly difficult. It's one of the reasons that we are actually requiring firefighters to live there. Seven minutes driving time of our station, which is what being we can all get into. So how the heck do places do this? Well, this format is actually a little different. We truly have a complicated boost warehouse. Everybody always compares ourselves to Tahoe and Tahoe is very similar. But in this aspect, it is a little unique. You have to drive around Tahoe, there's a fire station every few miles. There's actually quite a bit of resources. There's not a lot of resources that you have here. The model that I always compare ourselves to look at is the Big Valley or formerly Spa Valley. Their budget is roughly similar to Mammoth, it's slightly bigger. What they have is a full-time staffing engine that has four people on it and that's it. Those people go back to their homes, you know, on the west side or on the east side. So how do they provide services? Basically, there's a mutual aid system out there that has forest service. If a truckie comes down from the top or it's all comes down. That's how you have this system because yes, you need 15 people, but you don't need them every day, right? So that's basically what you do. Well, Mammoth Fire is probably one of the last combination departments in California. Today, there are two full-time firefighters on, the rest of them are volunteer part-time. It used to be when I started on the department, we were all volunteered. That was a little over 20 years ago. And that's again, one of the competing reasons, if you look at the station, it's a great, fantastic station. It has very nice equipment in it. But that was built at a time that we didn't have any administrative and personnel costs. We're basically capital expenditures were, you know, the bulk of what the district has to do. So times have changed over the last 20 years. I still think we provide growth services and the goal is to continue to provide those services regardless of where the measure goes. So no question on that. The district moved forward with this primarily because of the wildland threat, as everybody mentioned. Trying to stay on time. Two years ago, we received a CalFire fund that helped us with the wildland program out here. We stood up some seasonal wildland firefighters. We're actually planning fire in Big Bear right now. This is kind of reciprocal. And the goal is to continue to fund that program when that grant ends. And ultimately, there's a couple of different reasons for that. The US Forest Service has historically had a relatively strong presence in the community in the region. And don't quote me on this, but I believe when I started, there was about eight engines across the annual forest. Now it's about four now. They stopped staffing June Lake a few years back. This year, they actually announced that they weren't able to staff Mammoth Lakes as well. So these are the people to have up. So Crestview is the closest forest service engine that we have. They do try to bring on resources when they can, but areas they saw recently, there's been an Reno engine that's come through. We went to the night engine, but ultimately the regional capacity has gone down. And you know, the other note on that is we've gone out for a couple of different grants. The last one was about $5 million and both from the federal side and from the state side. What we've heard back is the local community has to have some skin in the game to get leverage, I mean, from the federal side. There's actually written examples of that. There's a CalFire list that you can get on. And to be on that list, you have to have your benefit assessment or your tax measurement is towards wildfire. You don't have those, then you're going to sign for it. So district is pushing this measure forward primarily for wildfire. The other kind of larger area that there's needed is some of our capital expenditures having pushback. Our ambulance is actually the second highest in the community behind, like three years of county ambulance was built in 19, sorry, 2021. So it's 23 years old and just keeping that equipment up, but primarily for firefighter personnel. That kind of covers the big stuff and I think I will load up all my time before I pass the talk.
Next up, we are hearing on the Mammoth Unified School District, Measure J. We have Shannon Sapp, NUSD Board Member and Board Clerk, and Lou Stewart, President of the NUSD Board.
Hi, thank you to the chamber for hosting us today. Really appreciate it. And we'll reiterate that we're not here to tell you to vote yes or no, on or upon. We're just here to provide information for you so you can make your own decisions. There they are, the reason, the reason we're here. Those little guys. So we started this process with identifying our needs. And the main way we wanted to identify our needs was first of all, focus on the students. What are the needs of the students? And we brought together members of the community and had them give us their input. And we also surveyed all of our teachers and surveyed all of our classified staff, our non-teaching staff. And they actually came up with a lot of recommendations and then narrowed it down for us and services. And we came up with a list of things that we all agreed we really need in our schools to better serve our children. So Measure J. We've got several areas that came up in those surveys results. So I'm going to start, actually, we'll be a little bit off the, off the presentation here on screen. I'm going to start with one that's really important. A few years ago, State of California mandated, oh, and it's called an unfunded mandate, by the way, mandated that schools start providing what they call transitional kindergarten. Most people know it as preschool, but this is wonderful. It's wonderful. We did start it. And so kids younger than kindergarten age, there's an age range, started off with four-year-olds. Our schools learn pre-kindergarten skills. It's wonderful. They enter the system with a lot more skills than they would otherwise. But the mandate also included a, an increase in the number of classrooms needed by virtue of lowering the age each year as we go. We now don't have enough classrooms to add TK classes to our schools. So we either have to get portables or we have to build. Somebody else recommended we go half-day TK, morning and afternoon. That's never been shown to work. And it doesn't help our families much either. So that's, that's one of the first ones, is this unfunded mandate from the state. Another one that hasn't become really important is an improvement to our HVAC system. We have some really great remodeling that happened in our schools thanks to our existing bond that we currently have. But we never got the classrooms air-conditioned. We also have like plug-in air filtering systems in each classroom. If we redid the HVAC, we would have that as a system in our classrooms. What's really important is, you know, we start school in August now. And August has some hot weather. And if you can imagine being a teacher with 25, 30 little kids in the sweltering classroom, you can imagine the need for an air-conditioned system in your room. So that's part of it. But the other part is we know that periodically we have some significant fires that happen in our area. Thank goodness, not here, but we get the smoke. And also, if you can imagine being in those classrooms where the smoke seeps in and kids and teachers alike are not either teaching or learning very well because of that environment. So this would have a filtering system that would filter out the smoke during the smoking times. So I'm going to hand this to Shannon and she's going to tell you about a few others.
Hi, I'm Shannon Sapp. I've been on the school board for 18 years. You will not see our names on our ballot this year because there were three positions open and three people that signed up. And those three are in this room right now. Marcy and Alonso Escobar and then ourselves.
Really is funny on the election.
So last year, we hired four teachers. And one of them was able to find counsel in Bishop. And three of them had to turn a stupid. So we are, and we do not qualify, or if you're a teacher, hearing comes to my, to qualify for our housing projects. So we want to build our own staff housing. And we already have the property and that shows to be really viable in the state of California to turn your property that you're not using, sorry, Stu. People all go away forgetting Stu. We will put our housing and rent it at low rates to get these families here and the teachers here so that they become wonderful members of our community and that they stay with us. The other one, another reason is that a field house. And the field house can be used all day long by our students. It would be at the elementary school so our youngest have a place to go and play during cold weather. And our oldest can come and practice their teams. So it's an athletic facility, you know, a field house. One of the most important things is that this will not raise your current property taxes. It will not raise your current property taxes. It will maintain it as a flat because the 98 blocks that built the middle school is it's sunsetting before we start paying on this total state. So we have Tony Thurand, who's the Superintendent of Schools for the State of California, is supporting this. And Stacy Adler, who's the Superintendent of Schools for Mono County, who just retired from that position, is also supporting us. We have posters at the backup room. We'll stay around afterwards. I'm going to hand out some posters now that you can pass around, some in English, some in Spanish. And I'm also going to ask for volunteers to help us. We can't campaign, so we're asking for volunteers to help us campaign.
I'm just going to add one more thing about the field house. Currently, our athletic teams have a hard time in the winter finding places to work out. And I just want to reiterate, our athletic program is not super schoolless. It keeps kids in school. It keeps kids wanting to keep their grades up so that they're eligible to play. And it builds a lot of camaraderie and of course teamwork concepts. So it's, it seems like something that maybe we can do without. But I've worked in high schools in California, a lot of them. And we don't have nearly what other high schools have to serve our athletes. So I'm just really hoping to keep that in mind and don't think that that may be an add-on. It's really important too. So as Shannon said, we'll be around for questions. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next up, we will be hearing from Emily Foss, Assistant County Counsel for Mono County.
So I'm going to talk very briefly about Measure K. It won't take a tremendous amount of your time. You can put up the language of the ballot measures here. This is what you'll see on the ballot come November. Very basic description of in order to fund services that Mono County provides. We're proposing a 3% increase in the transient C-Tax rate that exists in the county. Right now, the county's actually set at the same rate as the town, it's a 12% rate. This is my only slide, so I don't feel bad about putting a lot of words on it. It's the only thing you have to look at. But our current rate is 12%. It has remained that way for over 20 years. The last time we raised the TOT was in 2001. So it's looking like maybe it's time. And the board is considering it. We're getting about $4.4 million on average annually from our TOT. A 3% increase like this is going to bring in additional 1.1 million. And I believe in the intention, our board has previously, in order to avoid doing special taxes where you need the higher threshold to pass, or treating this as a general tax. So it's a 50 plus 1% to pass. That said, we've made several political commitments in the past and the county has kept to those. So just to review, 9% of our TOT, the original 9% that was enacted back in, I believe, 1969, and that was dedicated in 2000. That goes to emergency maintenance services. An additional 1% of all TOT revenue was dedicated in, I believe, 2004 to economics involvement. That's remained steady over time. The remainder goes into our general fund. Typically, these political commitments sort of get treated like, you know, a kid's E-MAN. You get your allowance, put it in the right place, that's where it goes. That's how we treat it. So housing is the political commitment for this particular measure. What that means is we have a housing opportunities fund. And a housing opportunities manager who's working on pilot programs like a bridge program. So like the one that the town was pursuing. Other development projects, particularly in North County where there's not a lot of housing. And the Mountain View Fire several years ago really knocked out affordable housing for folks that live up there. And it's been very challenging for those communities to rebuild. So we want to think holistically about all around the county where these projects need laid out to support our workforce throughout. I realize I could keep talking about this, but I think I'm going to save time for questions. And that's really what Measure K is all about, 1.1 million additionally for housing each year.
Okay. Next, we will be hearing on the Town of Mammoth Lakes, Measure L. And Chris Buzzer, Mayor Prochem, the Town of Mammoth Lakes will be presenting on this. And I think Mr. Wentworth, sidekick, will be coming as well. Mr. Wentworth, also a current Mammoth Lakes Town Council member.
Thank you. Is the microphone working? Yes, because I'm holding it right up to my mouth. Mr. Wentworth said it wasn't working out. It's like, no, it's one of those awful germy ones where you have to have it right there. So thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. Civic engagement is crucial and you are the 40 of the same 20 who comes to everything. But we really, really appreciate you and we need your help because we are, as members of the Vote Yes on Measure L Committee, we're helping spread the word. So since we're not employees of the town, we are able to advocate for something that we think is necessary for our community. And so that's where we'll be headed. So what's the opportunity here? You know, I feel like a lot of you know that the housing crisis is getting worse. It's not getting better. We know from the Short Term Rental Sub Committee and a lot of the research that was done that 1,200 people left the Town of Mammoth Lakes between '22 and '23, and that's from postal records. So, you know, we know that things are just changing dramatically and we want to do something about it. And so, you know, really, how are we going to address this? We've been addressing it with the Housing Now program. But we need funding now to continue the success of this program. And I want to take a moment to really talk about the Housing Now program. Nolan's back there. I wish Sandra were here. There's so much work that has gone into this over the last six to seven years. But I want to start with this very useful graphic that the staff developed to talk about how we achieve achievable housing. What's this bridge that we have to provide for our community? Down here are the folks who make 80% of AMI and below. And I'm really glad Brent brought up the fact that it's challenging because many, many people in our town, if you work a full-time job in many of our businesses, you won't qualify for this kind of housing. And we're talking about the parcel right down the street. You know, it's a fantastic new opportunity. People want to live there. But one thing we're going to have to do is figure out if there's some way we can push the state to allow us a little bit more local control. So we will continue to build. So we will continue to build out the parcel. And there is property on the parcel that will be for, um, different kinds of housing. So we won't take the kind of This is a special tax, and we need this to pass. And when we, as a council, asked the community to step up and say, yes, we're behind the special tax, let's go. We'll, we'll do this, you know, committee and we'll help you. No one stepped up. And we feel that it's our responsibility as the council to make sure that this passes because it's our single best chance to protect the future of our community. And with that, what did I forget?
Stick around and ask Chris the questions that are still burning in the back of your minds. Thank you. Excellent, Shannon.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move to Q and A. Um, Gina, if you can just help me get this mic set up and make sure it's on. Um, I'm just going to start with a couple of clarifying questions, and then we'll get to some of yours. Uh, for, uh, the fire measure, can you just clarify how much does this cost voters? I'm not sure if we heard that.
So yeah, just a couple of details on that measure. Uh, it's ninety-eight dollars per parcel. It has to be a parcel tax that goes to individual parcels. There's roughly ten thousand parcels in town, so bringing about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for the burn streets. Um, as I mentioned by a couple of those, it's a special tax, so it's dedicated to fire protection. Which is a positive. Negative on that is we do have to pass the two, there's, this group doesn't have an option to pass it, fifty percent. So it is a difficult threshold. I believe the last one, the district is something for sure, buying twenty-three votes.
Thank you so much for pointing. And question for county, I mean, if you want to come up. Uh, who, who pays the county tax? Is that people in the Town of Mammoth Lakes or unincorporated Mono County?
It's unincorporated Mono County, so as Mammoth Lakes is its own jurisdiction, your TOT, it was only to you. Our TOT, you do get to vote on it because you are county residents, even though you are also residents of the, uh, of the town. So you vote, your residents don't pay it. It's not like if they're paying fifteen, fifteen somehow layered on top of each other. This is just for, it's the rentals in June Lake, it's the Ruby Inn in Ridgeport, it's those types of properties. This is where the TOT applies, and it does not apply in Mammoth Lakes. You know, we'll show your ballot for your vote.
Thank you for the question. Gina, if you can, if you can raise your hand if you have any questions, and we will have the appropriate person come up to answer. Okay, there we go. But that's my music, just because it's hard to hear up here. Yeah, thank you.
So I've heard that fifteen percent TOT puts us at the highest in the state, second only to Disneyland. Are there other counties and towns that are starting to do the exact same thing? Are we going to be like the most expensive place in the state?
But this ultimately is going on throughout the state. Uh, TOT keeps splitting everywhere. Where we are different is that there's only two municipalities or county municipality in the state who rely so heavily on TOT. So, yes, for a short time, we will be believed. I am sure that others will see us as
And then the other thing is, when you go to other places, there's all kinds of other fees that get tacked on. So for example, if anyone's been to Las Vegas or New York City, every property you stay in has a resort fee and a this and a that. And there's many, many live items. So it's kind of an apples-to-oranges comparison because this is, ours is simply TOT. Um, and then obviously we have our TV, but it's, we are not sticking out, um, compared to other municipalities. I mean, it's just the way of the world.
Thank you. Any other questions? School, fire, county? Yes, okay, there we go.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but Alish, I'm curious exactly what the money is doing.
So again, the primary focus for that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand would be towards seasonal firefighters. We started up a program through a grant that is expiring at the end of this year. And what that's allowed us to do, and I started this when I became fire chief about two and a half, three years ago. Uh, but we have a full-time staff, about two to three firefighters that are on at any given point. On the scary, we actually have quite a few volunteer and part-time firefighters there. The ones that staff the weekends, for example, there's a full-time paid person that's on on the weekends. Um, and it's a great system. By any given fire, we can put three to five engines. And we actually, we had the Valdez Air Explosion out here, we had three engines on that. And if there was a child choking at the schools, we sent an ambulance out as well. So we have a good system, it's just with the wildland threat, um, there's not enough of a capacity in this community to be dealing with that. And with that wildland program that we started, been able to put on an additional engine. We currently have eight people that staff that program. That funding is coming to an end. Between that and the reduction in the federal staffing, our board felt it was important to, one, increase our program at a deficit, which is what we're currently doing to keep that staffed. Um, and two, to go to the community and see if they believe that it's worth the time and effort to find a launcher or funding source. Of that being said, the district did decide to move on with the nine-year subsys, similar to what the town's doing, with the belief that if the district is not providing the resources, it gives the constituents a chance to come back and decide how to afford. Is that answered?
I'll go and check the microphone. I think everybody probably care me up and told that I'm a little loud. So one of my concerns isn't about this one. In the past, we've seen the Forest Service change positions on what our fire department can and can't do. Do we have mutual aid agreement or an MOU with the forest? Since the nearest engine is in Crestview, that could be called away, and we have nothing here. So that if something starts locally, we don't have to wait for them to give us permission or to ask us to go out on the scenic loop or in the craters or in shady rest and put out a fire and somebody report. Because that is, to me, for your program, that is critical.
Yeah, a couple of things. So, um, and Fire District has a great relationship with our local cooperators on the forest from the firefighter side. Uh, my counterpart, J.C. McGar, was on Mammoth Fire, but I started twenty-seven years ago. So at that level, we work together very well. They're struggling for resources, and sometimes they have decisions made that they don't control locally that can hinder their operation. So I agree with you on that. We do have a standing agreement with the Forest Service to where we provide fire services, and it's basically the concept of closest station. So we go out and we can provide services with them, they can work for us. And we'll say that this is something that I have to rebuild that trust with them. Uh, we worked on a couple of their prescribed burns to help support our community, and I'll throw out there as a, a poll campaign, uh, related thing. You know, fire on the ground is healthy. Uh, we need to get to the point of where we're doing that, but we're doing it at opportune times where that smoke is frankly going to Nevada. It's not affecting our, you know, weekend, or trying to bring our tourists. And there are ways to get back to a healthy floor. So the part of that is having the Forest Service trust us. I recently met with Chance Chouav, who receives their fuels mitigation program. And they're working on how do they get our resources plugged in because frankly, they don't have the resources. I mean, this is not a new story to the town. Uh, what we're seeing in the fire protection side is very similar to every other interaction that most of us as community members have with the Forest Service. They just, they can't clean the bathrooms, they can't have, you know, the host supporting the tourists. So, well, it's unique in the sense that here is a fire protection issue. But ultimately, yes, we have those relationships, we have mutual aid agreements, and they appreciate the fact that we're standing up. So their challenge is the feds pay sixteen dollars an hour for firefighters. So you can imagine how difficult it is for them to staff. And that's why we're sure it's a serious
Great, thank you so much. Uh, one more, we have time for one more question. Anyone, one last question? Okay. All right, uh, we will move into, uh, announcements from the Chamber of Commerce by Gina, our new communications manager.
Hi, everyone. Yes, thank you all for coming to today's Power Lunch. I'd like to give, um, a warm thanks to all of our speakers, and also to thank you all for, for joining us. Hope you gained some valuable information. And also to thank once again, even though Brianna mentioned at the beginning, to the Eatery and Mammoth Brewing Co. for, um, I need to work this mic thrown out, right? Um, for hosting us tonight. So I have a couple of chamber announcements. Uh, the first one, this year's Business Excellence Awards finalists have been selected. And so next Monday, September twenty-third, we'll be sending out an email, um, for final voting. This year is only going to chamber members. So if you're not a chamber member, you can join. Or, um, if you are a chamber member, make sure, it's already going out to the primary address. So make sure that your member portal is up to date. If you need any help with that, you can just reach out to us. Tickets are also on sale for this great evening. Um, so they are limited, so I would suggest you just go to our website, and there's a link directly on there. And, um, that's mammothlakeschamber.org. And we also are looking for some sponsors. We do have some sponsors on board already, but we do need some more sponsors and also, um, uh, businesses to donate raffle prizes. So you can also reach out to us for that. Uh, our next event on next Tuesday, September the twenty-four, um, from five to seven P M., we have a business after hours, and that'll be hosted by Dr. Comfort, the dentist at the Mammoth Office. And that's right next to Rich Marino. Uh, that's free for chamber members and ten dollars for non-members. It's a great occasion to mix and mingle, so, um, I was looking at, what are you looking behind me? Um, yeah, so for more information, once again, go to our website, and you can, um, get the information and also register. Should be a fun little evening. We haven't had one for a while, I think, back in May, so everyone is welcome. Um, next Thursday, September twenty-sixth, um, each Mount Mammoth Lakes Tourism and Mammoth Lakes Chamber of Commerce, we partner to bring our local community updates on issues, events, and programs affecting Mammoth Lakes residents. So we have our Community Coffee, uh, next Thursday from eight-thirty A M. to nine-thirty A M., and that's on Zoom. Um, if you know anybody who couldn't be here today, uh, next week's Community Coffee, we'll also be talking about the ballot measures. And it'll also be on the Eastern Sierra Now YouTube channel. And that's thanks to Jesse Steele here, who's been recording the whole event today. Then, um, October, that is knocking on our door, we have some more events. We have the Mammoth Lakes Restaurant Mixer. We haven't had an in-person one for quite a while. So this will be at Two Meets from four to six P M. It's also free to members and ten dollars to non-members. We'll have a number of updates, uh, that are affecting restaurant owners. And we'll also be talking about the Chamber's initiative to help promote, um, restaurants that will be open during, um, Christmas and New Year's for this year. So come along and get all the updates. And lastly, we have our Career Compass Expo Day, which is on Tuesday, October the twenty-second, where the Chamber is practically going to overtake the Mammoth High School. Um, we still need some people, some speakers, and some volunteers to help us out with that. I think Marcy at the front there has been talking to people as they've been coming in. Um, so we want basically just one hour of your time, somewhere in between eight and, I think, one P M. approximately. Um, if you want more information, Marcy's over there at the front, and you can get some information from her. Um, I mean, that would be a great help. You can be like mini mentors to, you know, students who are making their career choices or their, even their job choices if they're deciding not to go under further education. So we really, um, want the business community to, and, um, come out and help with that. So that's about it. And if you've not signed up for our newsletter, which we put out every Monday morning, and it's loaded with lots of information, uh, please go to our website and, um, sign up for the newsletter. And thanks you all once again.
And that's all right.
That's great.